I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board 4J to order on Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022 at 7:04 PM. We have six board members attending on Zoom tonight. Here with me is Gordon Laffer, Kirthe Hasijah Kaufman, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, and myself, Maya Rabasa. Please join in the flag salute to be led by our new superintendent, Dr. Andy Die.
Will we display a flag or shall I just proceed? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Die. Now I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalapuea people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 through 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Kalapuea were moved to the Grand Ronn Reservation, and some were moved to the Sylet's Reservation. It is important to note that all of Lane County was an important trading and gathering area for chemists and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederated Tribes of Coos, Lower Amqaa, and Sayusla Indians, the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronn Indians, and Confederated Tribes of Sylet's Indians, the Coquell Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Amqaa Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. Begin with, we have an agenda review. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda? Anyone would like to request? I don't see any hands raised, so the agenda stands as is. The next item in the agenda is an introduction of guests in the superintendent's report. So, Andy Die, Dr. And, Dr. Die, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Rabasa and members of the board. Tonight is the first board meeting of the 2223 school year, which in many ways represents the beginning of the, of a new school year itself. Although most of our students and staff are not back into their schools quite yet, we do have administrators and some staff members working hard to make sure that all is in order for staff, students, and teachers when they return in just a few short weeks. This being my first board meeting as superintendent, I again want to take the opportunity to thank the board for the trust that you've placed in me to support the district and community in this position. I am very aware of the high expectations this board and our community has for our schools. I've shared what I believe to be our biggest three priorities with administrative staff, and we'll do so with our licensed and classified staff upon their return, and want to do the same here. I see our biggest three priorities are ensuring that there is a coordinated focus on equitable outcomes and experiences for all of the students that we serve with an amplified focus on the needs of those who have traditionally been underserved. We need to ensure timely communication and meaningful community engagement, that that's the norm in our district, and that we need to attend to the safety and well-being of all students and staff. I look forward to the work ahead and appreciate the opportunity to partner with this board in service to the Eugene community. We're actively planning for a more familiar start to the school year. Although COVID-19 will still factor into our planning for the year, we have systems and supports in place that will allow us to continue building relationships with our students and families and deliver in-person learning. We look forward to having visitors and volunteers return to our schools this year. They have been and will be a very important part of the student experience. More information about what folks can expect in this new school year will be coming in future weeks, but suffice it to say that I have a great sense of optimism about our future as a school district, and I hope that that's a sentiment that's shared throughout the community. Dr. Martin Luther King spoke of the need for a strong mind and a tender heart in a piece that he wrote that, that we as administrators read a few days ago, especially in times of challenge in his book, "The Strength to Love." And I believe this to be absolutely true for all of us here. These last two years have been incredibly difficult for all of us in similar ways and in some not-so-similar ways, from person to person. As a district, we were called upon to think very critically while making some very tough and at times extremely unpopular decisions. I'd like to share how pressed I've been with everyone in the district who did just that while at the same time striving for compassion and thoughtfulness, caring for their, for their fellow person. Just this week, key district-level leaders and their teams are working together to establish the way that we will collectively approach organizational decision quality. Key to our efforts are going to be making sure that the right voices are able to influence district thinking, being very clear on our intended outcomes, and centering equity into every decision being considered. By committing to decision quality, we'll be a better, more transparent, and more responsive district. I want to let folks know that we're planning a return to a more familiar back-to-school kickoff event. The event's going to be held at South Eugene High School on Thursday, September 1st. Light morning freshmen will be available, and our very own Jennifer Sturlock will offer the keynote. I look forward to seeing 4J colleagues back in person, and I invite members of the board to join us if you can. More information will be sent out in coming weeks. Lastly, I want to mention my 100 chats. I've set aside time for 130-minute conversations with any student, staff, parent, and community member that's interested. I hope those that are interested will go to the district website and sign up. Once you've signed up, a staff member will reach out and schedule either a Zoom telephone or in-person conversation. If 130-minute time slots is not enough, we'll extend. Community engagement's really important to the district and is very important to me. If anybody has questions or needs assistance about how to do that, please call 541-790-7706, and we'll do everything that we can to help. Thank you again for being the opportunity to serve, for the opportunity to serve as superintendent in Eugene School District 4J. To me, this district is home. My wife teaches here, have six children that either are or have gone through our schools. I've had the pleasure of being a teacher, an administrator, district office administrator, and now superintendent in this district, and I'm truly humbled and honored by the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is comments by the board chair. I want to welcome everyone to the first board meeting of the 2022-2023 school year and to welcome Superintendent Mandy Die to his new role in the district. Tonight, however, I want to focus my statement on a message to my fellow board members. While our board goals for district work will be forthcoming, I want to share some of my hopes for how we move forward to get that work done. These first two meetings in August offer us the chance to finish up any lingering business from the previous school year, as well as collaboratively set the tenor for our board meetings. As a body of seven, it is up to us to contribute to cultivating a tenor that is welcoming, productive, and rooted in a deep sense of thoughtfulness and care for one another and for all 4J stakeholders. It is up to us to share our passions, curiosities, concerns, and celebrations, and to actively listen when others are doing the same. I am excited to collaborate with all of my fellow board members, as well as our new superintendent, as we jump into the continued development of our vision, but foremost, our relationships with one another, with district staff, with students, and with all 4J stakeholders. 4J has the opportunity to repair and heal past mistakes and to develop and expand the good work we have begun. As a community, we have been submerged in individual and collective trauma, and it is up to us to extend care, grace, and support to the individuals and the communities we serve. Our students deserve to experience a year and many more to follow that is intentionally focused on healing and growing, a commitment to transformations, large and small, individual and systemic. Our families deserve this. Our staff deserves this, and I look to my fellow board members to join me in this work. It is up to us to set the stage for transformation, and there is no better starting point than with one another. It must start with us, and I have zero doubt we can do so with great success. So, thank you, Michelle, Judy, Kirthe, Alicia, Gordon, and Laurel, who is not with us tonight, for your dedication to our district. The time and energy you put into serving the 4J community is tremendous and deserves continuous and consistent appreciation. I see you. I see your commitment, and most of all, I see the love and concern for our community that drives you to do this work. Thank you. I'm proud, but also excited to work alongside and in partnership with you. The next item on the agenda are items raised by the audience. We have two speakers tonight. The school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online or contacting the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper on the screen, known as Blue Sky Timer, will show a sign when the speaker has 30 seconds left and when their time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operation and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7707 for more information about submitting a complaint. As I said before, we have two speakers lined up to speak tonight, and I will pass it off to Lisa Fjordback to welcome our speakers into the Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker is Christina Shaughnessy, and she is in with us. Christina, if you want to go ahead and turn on your microphone, and I'll start the timing, followed in, followed by Harry Sanger.
Hello. I'm Christina Shaughnessy. We need a real solution for our district's crisis in recruiting, retaining, and wages of our classified school employees. Eight months and still no contract between 4J and our Classified School Employee Association. I need to ask why. What is the unspoken underlying bias here? As such a diverse group, classified employees are what the district says it wants, yet are not included in the financial opportunity afforded other employee groups. 4J is negotiating the way employers traditionally negotiate with their lowest-paid class of employees. The lower you keep the wages, the bigger the win for 4J. I expect your team feels they are doing their best job for you, for our community, in keeping expenses down. You ignored our employees' efforts at bargaining from January until June, a sign that you're following a strategy that won't work. So far, only two bargaining sessions. Many of our classified employees are working poor. Professional, skilled, hard-working people experiencing food and shelter insecurity. In the last 10 years, food prices have increased 32%. Gas prices are 60% higher. Rents and housing prices have gone up 50%. To recruit and retain, pay better wages long-term. Many current employees are struggling, while custodial, nutrition services, educational assistance, grounds, facilities, transportation, and others have huge numbers of unfilled positions. An example is transportation. Last year, 30 to 40 bus driver positions unfilled. Drivers and transportation support staff are exhausted, many working a lot of overtime. Transportation administrators with $90,000 and $100,000 salaries regularly drive bus routes because we are not willing to pay bus drivers $20 an hour. Temporary wage incentives do not solve this crisis. Paying more permanently will work. Pay all classified employees at least 25% more permanently. In transportation alone, the reduced overtime could cover that 25% increase. Solve this problem. Pay enough permanently to recruit and retain our classified staff. This is the way for 4J to win. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, we will bring Harry Sanger in. He'll be here just in a moment.
Good evening, Chair Rabasa and 4J Board. Thank you for extending the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Harry Sanger, and I appear only on behalf of myself and my family. I don't care for the new normal. I don't care for throwing out established norms and expectations. I watched the June 22nd meeting, where formal procedures for adopting curriculum were thrown by the wayside against the recommendations made to the board. I hope that we begin this year better than we ended last year. I hear much ado about dismantling the oppressive system, but despite having the ability to hold safe hybrid meetings, you opted to go online only, reducing opportunities for democratic participation. I hear concerns for underrepresented minorities, but when pointing out a minority group whose interests have been trampled for two years, I'm falsely labeled. What kind of bigoted thinking leads elected officials to bully and label their constituents in this way? What does it say about district leadership when multiple board members are allowed to lie about what a constituent said? These same leaders allowed personal insults in a public comment with no admonishment. Will this behavior continue to be enabled by people who should know better? Going forward, what can parents who disagree with your decisions expect? Will anyone who speaks out against ideological programming be called a white supremacist or a racist? Is this the new normal, that the board's platform will be used to denounce parents who challenge 4J's direction? Is it okay to bully and label your constituents, to rant against them online and attempt to alienate them from friends and employers? I'm a member of this community. I work with people who watch these meetings. I volunteered in my neighborhood association. I'm a parent, and I think I have valid concerns about decorum and the level of discourse we should expect from elected officials. The past two school years have been incredibly challenging for parents, teachers, staff, admin, and students. I hope that the board includes more voices going forward and stops pushing an agenda that seems to be based in political ideology, not compromise solutions that meet the needs of all students. I believe that making CRT praxis integral to our school district's decisions is causing unintentional harm that needs to be considered with more weight than we have seen. I also think that you owe those sitting in this room at the last in-person board meeting an apology for the blanket accusation that they belong to a hate group because they opposed a political agenda item. I appreciate recent calls for compromise, understanding, and working together. The new superintendent, Andy Die, has offered to meet with members of the community to hear their diverse concerns directly. I encourage students and families to reach out and take advantage of this opportunity that represents a positive shift in district leadership. I want to see a successful school year where we elevate the educational opportunities provided for all of our children. I hope that we can embrace love and unity over hate and division as we face the challenges of this next year together. Thank you.
Thank you to both of our community members who shared public statements with us tonight. We appreciate your time and thoughts shared. The next item on the agenda are comments by employee groups. Tonight, we'll hear from the Eugene Education Association, so welcome to Sabrina Gordon.
Thanks, Maya. Good evening, everybody. I'm Sabrina Gordon. I am president of Eugene Education Association. Just want to start tonight by welcoming new superintendent Andy Die to his new role, and thank every member of the board for your service, for all of the time and energy and passion that you put into helping to lead this district. Want to express appreciation that the union leadership has been included in some meetings during this transition this summer, some leadership meetings over the past couple of weeks. It feels really good to have been invited into the room and to be listening to those conversations and learning more about how decisions are made in our district and being able to be part of those conversations. I feel like it's really setting the stage for a collaborative relationship. We're in kind of one of those in-between moments right now in the summer that's really all too brief between last year and the year that is to come. And the last couple of years, as we all know, were rough, like, rough on students, rough on staff. They were just really hard. And in fact, a lot of educators barely made it through the last year. I looked tonight in your board packet at the list of new hires, which, personnel actions and new hires, which is always exciting, but I also look with sadness at the list of resignations and retirements. You know, some of those folks are moving on to very exciting things, but every educator that District 4J loses always creates a little bit of sadness and questions about why. So, with these few short weeks that we have before licensed staff return for a new year, right now is the time for this district to be thinking about what can be done to make next year better, to help educators feel like we can do this, because our students need us to feel that way. Our students need educators to build their resilience after these tough years and hopefully moving into some easier years and better years. But in order for educators to be able to help students be resilient, we need our educators to be resilient, and to do that, they need to feel supported by their district. So while these leadership meetings that we are getting to participate in and hear conversations in are laying out long-term plans and give me a lot of hope and optimism for what's to come, I just want to put out there that there is a very immediate need for hope and optimism now. And so, right out of the gate, when educators come back in a few weeks, they need to know right away what hope and optimism they have, that things are going to be different this year and that our jobs are going to be doable so that we can do what we need to do for kids. You only get one start to a school year. Every educator, every teacher knows this. You get one first day, and you have to make a good impression. We get one start to this school year, and I look forward to seeing what 4J will do with this to help build that resilience in educators. Probably the most important thing that educators need is time, time to do their jobs well. So what can 4J do immediately to give teachers that time? And I'll just leave tonight by expressing EEA's support for our classified colleagues in OSEA as they continue contract negotiations. Just want to put out there that we appreciate the critical work that these classified colleagues do, and we stand in solidarity with them for the compensation and respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. The next item on the agenda is comments by individual board members. Anybody want to go first? If not, I'm happy to channel my former teacher self and call on you. Alicia, like, okay, great. Alicia.
Thanks, Maya. Well, committee reports, I have not attended one committee meeting in June or July, probably maybe in June, but I did have the chance to go to OSEA Summer Conference where I got to spend a little more time with some of my colleagues and attend some really good workshops with a lot of learning plus getting to meet our other members of other school boards within our county at our regional meeting. So it was a real good opportunity, and I very much enjoyed it. And welcome, everybody, to a new year. Welcome, teachers. Welcome, class. Just welcome everyone to, to August and the start of our new year. And that'll be it. Thanks.
Thanks, Alicia. I see Kirthe is ready to go. Kirthe?
I'm always that kid who just wanted to get it over with so I don't get called on by the teacher. So thanks, Maya. Maya, the first thing I did want to do is also thank you for taking on the role of chair. I know while we haven't been in board meetings, that you and Gordon and Dr. Die have been working hard through the summer to also get us ready to go, so I appreciate that a lot. We know how much work it takes to get these things in order. Sabrina, I wanted to echo your message. Thanks for saying those things on starting the year with positivity, and I really appreciate Dr. Die's message on the three priorities on the equity and the safety and the other pieces that make sure all our students have a place. I do believe that those go hand in hand, that those aren't separate issues that we need to be focused on for the new school year. I am looking forward to, my youngest does start first grade at Adams Elementary, so we're looking forward to another 12 years in 4J. So I'm hoping to set the stage for a really strong educational experience for all of them, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the teachers have. I know we had some great instructional adoptions in the, in the springtime. I just think there's a lot of good things that I'm looking forward to, but making sure that we are prioritizing students' health and safety. And everyone who works in the district's health and safety, I think, is just such a high priority for all of us right now in this day and age. So I appreciate everyone's work and all of that. So thank you. Welcome back to school year.
Thank you, Kirthe. Judy, I see your hand up.
And we're avoiding being called on by the teacher, always. So anyhow, I just want to say, you know, this past month has really been quiet. It's been a time of reflection and some rejuvenation, and it's been very welcome. You know, last year, as we know, was very intense, busy, and stressful. We did an amazing, just incredible amount of things, not to mention the superintendent search, contract negotiations, curriculum adoptions, selecting new board members, and on. So I'm really looking forward to this coming year. So this, this July, I also got to attend the Oregon School Board Association Conference, and the pre-conference training was on parent and family engagement, and just reminded me, which I really believe in the critical importance of our parents and our family and the success of every one of our students. And I'm hoping our district can really this year be considering some of the wonderful suggestions and strategies that we heard at that meeting. I think it really dovetails with what the superintendent talked about as saying welcoming volunteers and parents back in their school. Yippee. And let's really give them some, you know, a lot of support and a lot of ideas for really how they can help with their own student success. So I feel really, I want to also thank Maya and Gordon for stepping up for leadership, and I feel really ready to jump into the work this year and my new board assignments. And I'm especially looking forward to really focusing and moving our work forward in equity and inclusion, which is something that has been very important to me in my work, transformative justice, implementing these wonderful new curriculum that we just adopted too. I'm excited about that. It'll be a lot of work, and I want to welcome our whole staff back. They're coming soon, and I know we've all been adapting to change, which is always challenging, even though it might be good change. And it's going to be exciting. You know, we, we have a lot of new leaders and new people, new leadership and new staff members in our building to get to know and form partnerships with. So I'm really looking forward to a good year. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Gordon, I see your hand next.
Thanks. I also want to give thanks and congratulations to Maya, and also wish happy birthday to Sabrina Gordon, who apparently wanted to spend her birthday at a school board meeting. This is the, the first meeting of the year, so I just want to say something about general goals, which are, you know, similar to things I've talked about before. You know, the, the key problem that I see is that too often, and this is a national thing, not specific to us, and certainly not meant as anything about the great educators we have working in our schools, but too often, school is just boring, stultifying, makes people think less of themselves, and ramps up unnecessary anxiety. And generally, it's the least privileged students who have the least options and fewest alternatives to find a form of schooling that works well for them. This is not unique at all to 4J, but this is the place we are, the place we can work to address that. And among the things that I think go into that, that I hope we can work on this year, is to reduce the amount of standardized testing, reduce the amount of time kids have to spend on homework, support educators' professional autonomy, which I think means both more planning time as individuals and teams, more educator-directed professional development, and trying to encourage teachers' ability to find engaging ways to teach the material they teach. Generally, we need to find the things that, or the, the things that teachers are passionate about teaching. For the most part, from, it's not entirely true, but for the most part, from kindergarten to graduation of high school, it doesn't really matter if you learn about the French Revolution or the stages of photosynthesis. or the math of music, any of these can open up the world for you. And for sure, any of them can be boring. When people teach something they're passionate about, it makes that topic come alive for students and engage them. Obviously, we have certain areas we need to teach, but I think there's a lot of leeway within those topics. And I think we need to look at funding, mentoring, summer enrichment training and other ways to support that. Part of that, I think, is we need to have, and I believe that we're starting this, is a fundamental change from regarding employees and employee unions as adversaries to treating them as partners who we work with in, in trying to figure things out. I, I had no committee meetings, but I did have a chance to meet with teachers who are working on integrating critical thinking. Sometimes it's called philosophy, but it's really more like critical thinking into both elementary and middle school classes and saw some remarkable things. And you know, everybody in the world talks about how we need to teach kids critical thinking skills. But when you look at, okay, what does that mean in reality? It often doesn't mean much or nobody can figure it out. And I think we have some really good examples going on here. Part of, part of that in part is teaching gender. And I'll just say this, maybe this is my like pet thing, or maybe I'm projecting from my experience. I feel like in middle school and high school, people spend 70% of the time thinking about gender anyway. And so if we want to teach something that would engage students, we can teach something like that. And teaching, you know, what is it to be a man? What is it to be a woman? What is it to be, like, not just all the different forms of gender to affirm, but it's like, what is it to be a human being? What is it to grow up? What is it to, why do I feel the way I do? I think there are really deep things that we can teach if, by looking at some of the examples we have now of teaching both critical thinking and gender. Two last things I want to touch on. One is the question of security at meetings that will enable us to go back to in-person meetings. I wish this is something we didn't have to work on, but we're living in an explosive time in the country and a time when things that feel like, oh, that can't possibly happen, turn out that they can happen. So I know that this is something that we're going to work on. And I hope that we can come out with something that is a serious and effective plan. That's not symbolic, but something that really all of us and the public can rely on. And the last thing, I was able to be part of a couple of discussions about finalizing the plan for constructing the new Camus Ridge. And I just want to give thanks both to Superintendent Di and to the facilities team. We had, in my experience, for the first time, a completely transparent, open presentation about what's going on, what the options are, what the options are within the budget. That included communications, both with board members and with parent leaders from the Camus Ridge community. And I think after a long struggle, have come to the point where we have the best we can have moving forward and we can move forward. And I really appreciate the way it was done and the work that it took to get us there. Thanks.
All right, Michelle, I'm not calling on you. You're just the last one.
I have to say that July was a very nice break. I think we all needed to slow down and take a breath. And a lot of the things that have been mentioned in the past, I'd like to see moving forward. I think we need to value relationships, collaboration and find ways to connect. I was able to attend the meeting last Friday and felt that the opportunity to have discussions and meet people is a good step moving forward. And I hope to build on those introductions and have strong relationships with everyone in 4J. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Moving along, the next item on our agenda is the consent group. We have four items on our consent agenda tonight. In the name of transparency, I'll go through them quickly. Approve an agreement with EEA concerning substitute teachers. Approve routine personnel actions. Approve meeting minutes and approve an implementation, or rather, re-implementation of salad bars at middle schools and high schools. Is there a motion? Gordon?
I'd like to move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Do I have a second for that motion? Okay, great. So the approval of the consent agenda is moved by Gordon and seconded by Kirti. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. Great, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. The next agenda on our, the next item on our agenda is items for information. And we have one of those tonight, and that is a review of the board committee assignments. So most of you, I'll walk through this a little bit here. Most of you, actually, all of you should probably not find too many surprises here with the committee assignments for the 2022, 2023 school year. But I'll read through them and hopefully we can just show our, our agreement for the, for the committee assignments, although we can have discussion as well. So for the budget committee, as required by statute, all of us will be members of that committee. The equity committee representatives will be Maya and myself and Michelle. Audit and finance committee will be Judy and Alicia. The charter school committee council representative will be Laurel. Instructional advisory council reps will be Gordon and Kirti. The lane council of governments representative will be Laurel. The Eugene Education Foundation will be represented, will be represented by Judy. Long-range facilities advisory and bond oversight committee will be Kirti and Gordon. Lane ESD budget committee, pending lane ESD appointment is Alicia with Judy as an alternate. The legislative committee will be Judy and Kirti. And the North Region Planning Committee will be Michelle and myself. In addition, we have two subcommittees, one which is ongoing and one which was requested for a bit of time last year and didn't get rolling right away. We have a student engagement or student voice subcommittee. And that will be a continuation of Laurel and myself. And Alicia had been on it, but we will have, we will, we will be welcoming Michelle into that space instead. And then the mental health subcommittee will be Laurel, Michelle and myself as well. If all are in agreement with the assignments, we can affirm at this time. But I see some hands up, so I will go ahead. And I see Gordon's hand first, followed by Alicia and then Judy.
I just wanted to clarify, I think this is true, but I wanted to clarify with you, Maya, that the assignments here are the people who have to go to these meetings. But any board member who wants to go, who wants to sit in on a meeting that they're not assigned to, is welcome to. That they're not prohibited from. I, I thought, I thought that's how it worked in the past. And I just wanted to make sure that was clear, especially for the new board members.
That, that's my understanding as well. And I saw a little head nod from Alicia, who is our institutional knowledge person. She doesn't want that pressure. Unless somebody says otherwise, my understanding is the same as yours, Gordon. And so just to reiterate, anyone can attend these meetings. The above-mentioned people are the ones who are being tasked with attending. Alicia, do you have a question, concern?
I actually just, two things, why, that, that is absolutely true, Maya, but you can't participate. So I can't jump in and give my opinion, because then it would be, it might be a quorum. No, I just wanted to say thank you. I think picking committees is one of those things, you start off as chair and you have to do it right away. And it's not always easy. And I'm glad I got the finance and budget, so the areas I need the most growth in. So thank you. And I think you did a good job of, of spreading it out. And I'm really excited that new board members are getting some opportunities. So thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. I did try to listen to people's input and fit that in as much as possible. And I heard you loud and clear, you obviously have the financial interest. Judy?
Um, thank you. Yeah, I just, I wanted to, yeah, also thank you for, for meeting with all of us. I think I was just, somehow I didn't realize, I, I would like actually to be an alternative for the mental health subcommittee. I didn't realize we were setting that up and was on it and that, that was an option. I see there's already three people, four would not work. But I do know if I attend, I can't participate. So I'm just going to put it out there for just, if anyone, I'd love to be an alternative for that. So.
That sounds great. We will definitely have that noted in the minute, minutes. And I have that on record here in my particular, my specific notes. And I, I'll make sure that that's made clear to everyone. Thank you for volunteering to do that, Judy. That's very helpful. Does anybody else have any questions or, or comments about the assignments? So if, if, without objection, we'll go ahead and consider these our assignments for the year. I look forward to hearing about the experiences you have in the committee meetings. The next agenda item is items for action. And we have one item for action tonight, and that is to approve the resolution of a complaint. The board takes action in open session on complaints. Tonight, we are considering a complaint filed against a board member on May 12th, 2022. Before we move forward, would someone like to make a motion? Okay, sorry, I muted myself. Michelle, I see your hand raised.
Yes. Um, I would like to move that the board find the evidence does not substantiate the complaint and the complainant be notified of this decision in accordance with our uniform complaint procedure, KLR.
Is there a second to Michelle's motion? Okay, I see Kirti raised her hand to second. So the, the, the motion was to a... Michelle, can you repeat that one more time, just so we are all on the same page?
I move that the board find the evidence does not substantiate the complaint and that the complainant be notified of this decision in accordance with uniform complaint procedure, KLR.
Okay, as moved by Michelle Shu and seconded by Kirti Hasidja Kaufman. Is there any discussion? Judy?
Um, I'm just going to say that I'm going to be voting to, I, I would like to maybe amend this, that we would have more discussion. Maybe that would be, I'd like to propose an amendment that we have an executive session to have more discussion and technical assistance. I feel like we reviewed some, but not all of the complaint thoroughly and think we would benefit from more advice and conversation and potentially training on it. So I think maybe the appropriate thing is to propose that as an amendment.
Is there a second for the amendment? Okay, the amendment is moved by Judy and seconded by Alicia. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Michelle?
I feel that we discussed this thoroughly in a previous executive session. We've, we've spent, we've invested many hours in, in this complaint.
I see your hand up again, Judy.
Um, but someone else, if anyone wants to speak before me, so that's fine.
I will definitely call on anybody that raises their hand. Thank you. I appreciate that thoughtfulness. Looks like you can probably go ahead.
I guess I just want to say, I do acknowledge that we talked about this complaint in one executive session in that I feel, my feeling is, when I went back and reviewed all the aspects of the complaint, that we did not thoroughly look into all the parts of the complaint. So that is what I would like to do. I feel like there's some things, some learning and some more conversation there. So I'll leave it at that. And we can vote on the amendment.
I do see Gordon has his hand up, so let's continue the discussion.
I just wanted to say super briefly that I, I think we spent several hours on this and we were with, we spent that time also with outside counsel advising us all the way. This was our decision, not outside counsel. But that's, so that's why I, I feel like if there were issues that came up that somebody thinks we could get training on, that's a separate thing, that's unrelated to this particular thing. But that's why I think we're ready to vote on it tonight.
I see Michelle's hand up, but I just want to make sure that anybody else have anything they want to add before we do another round. If not, I'll go ahead and call on Michelle.
Um, I'm, I'm just, I personally don't feel that continuing a discussion and looking further into this complaint would serve to minimize harm. I think it would create more harm. And I, I, I don't see the value in continuing to further discuss it.
Alicia?
Thanks, Maya. I think these are always pretty hard to determine, because it's really rather subjective. One thing I just really want to be clear on is, our counsel said she did even look at the evidence. So I appreciate it, Gordon, that she should have been there to, to walk us through and to give us her opinion. But she had stated she wasn't going to, I believe it was sit through all those meetings. So it's hard to say she looked. So those are my concerns and, and why I would like us to go back and really look and make sure everybody has, has seeded. And, and we maybe even have a discussion about a, a little deeper. So that's my thinking. Thanks.
So I just, I'm very new to this and I just want to make sure that we're not treading into territory where we are discussing what we discussed in executive session, because it has been hammered home to me that that is not information that we, we bring out of those sessions. So I just, I, I want to call attention to that and...
You're right.
Gordon, I see your hand raised.
So not, not trying to argue or convince anybody, but just, you know, to the extent that things are being said for the record, and I'm trying to say this in a super careful way, given what you just said, Maya, which I think is right. But I just want to be clear that our, our counsel believed that we had everything we needed to make a decision. And we went on that basis. Thanks.
I'd, I'd love to make a quick comment, but I will refrain from doing so until everybody has the chance to speak their minds. Does anybody else have something to say? Okay, then, oh, Kirti?
I've been thinking about this and I've been two months about it. And my first thought is with Michelle, I do believe that I personally have spent time in this. And I should say, with the personnel involved in the particular complaint, to, I think, I feel comfortable at least making a decision on it tonight based on some of our other... Based on some of our other procedures and processes that we've been through just in a few short months that but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Kyrie. Anyone else? So I guess the only thing I will add to that is that I can only speak to myself, but I definitely dove into the complaint and all of the evidence that was referenced in the complaint. And I did my due diligence as board chair to send all of that to everybody with the request that people familiarize themselves, not only with the complaint, but with the references in the complaint. I also feel confident that we came out of our conversation under the guidance of our counsel, who did not at any point indicate a need for us to slow down or revisit. So I, that's where I stand. I feel, I feel very, very comfortable with the with the work that I put in to inform myself as much as possible. And I hope that others did as well, even if it hadn't been in the past, but in preparation for tonight's meeting. I don't want to close discussion until everyone indicates that they're ready to vote on the amendment. But if I don't see any hands raised, I will call the vote. Okay. Not to rush you along, but everyone in favor of the amendment to re- to reconsider this complaint in executive session. And Judy, I don't know if you want to repeat your amendment or if that is the the spirit of the amendment is to revisit it in executive session.
It was to revisit it with having a fuller discussion about all aspects of it. Yeah, possibly, yeah, and other legal advice. So yes.
So all those in favor of the amendment to the original motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, please do the same.
Aye.
Okay, so the amendment does not pass with Judy Newman and Alicia Hayes voting yes on the amendment. And Gordon Lefer, Michelle Shu, and Kyrie Hasidja Kaufman and myself voting against the amendment. So we go back to the original motion and is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay, without further discussion on that motion, all those in favor of considering the motion or considering the complaint unsubstantiated by evidence and to communicate that to the complainant in writing, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand and say aye. Forgot that part, sorry. So the motion passes with Gordon Lefer, Michelle Shu, and Kyrie Hasidja Kaufman and myself voting in favor of the motion and Judy Newman and Alicia Hayes voting against the motion. And as chair, I will follow through on making sure that communication is sent as soon as possible and within the constraints of our K L A R timeline. Okay, so then moving along, the next item on our agenda is our items for action at a future meeting. The first item for action is to consider approval of resolution concerning protective measures to ensure safe public meetings. I will go ahead and hand this over to Superintendent Dy to lead the conversation.
Thank you. I know that the resolution itself is online, available online and that it was sent to you. But I still would appreciate the opportunity to do a brief summary for those that haven't had the chance to take a look at it, but are listening in, the purpose of the resolution. It's number 2023 dash zero five is to ensure that in-person public meetings of the board are held in a manner that's safe for for everyone involved, community members, staff, students and members of the school board. There are four points that the resolution provides for. The first is that individuals attending a public meeting, regardless of their vaccination status, would be required to adhere to OHA Oregon Health Authority requirements. Same for Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Regarding COVID guidelines, board chairs authorize or modify the masking requirement when consistent with guidelines from health authorities. Board chair may also order additional safety measures necessary for in public meetings. And that the board chair may choose to recess the meeting, go to a virtual meeting, adjourn the meeting or and reschedule it for another day, depending on what the self safety and health concerns may be at that particular time. And I open it up for any questions or discussion. Gordon?
I guess. I mean, all of this seems fine and good to me, but also kind of seems like a first a first step that mostly authorizes the chair to use her judgment, which I think is good and we need to do that. But and I don't remember whether we could adopt this policy and then continue to work on other things. But I think there's other aspects of this we have to continue to work on that aren't addressed here. Maybe, maybe that wasn't the goal. I just want to flag that.
Judy?
I just wanted to make sure that this is clear in here because I was reading something else. So because one of the places I think that was particularly challenging is when we recessed meetings and went into the other room, that there was no clear line of authority for what the decision would be next. And so we found ourselves talking amongst ourselves, but didn't really want to be deliberating in that room. So am I? Am I correct in in reading that the board chair will have that responsibility and authority to just do that? In this? Because that was sort of a place of of confusion and frustration.
That's my understanding of the fourth bullet point on the document that was shared, that the, maybe the wording is not clear enough. It states that the board chair may choose to recess the meeting, go to a virtual meeting format or adjourn and reschedule. Could read that the board shall choose, but I but I believe the intent is that the board as a whole delegates that authority to the board chair in the event that it's necessary.
As long as that's clear to everyone else, I just wanted to call that out because that was something particularly we needed to clarify, I think. Yeah.
So so Judy, my understanding is that this is still just a draft and that that clarification in terms of language is definitely appreciated. This also is reliant on the board designing a plan and then the chair having the responsibility of or being delegated the person to call for that plan of action to to be put into place. But you're absolutely right, part of this is to avoid that that space where we need to make a decision, but can't do so collectively because we're no longer in public meeting and haven't adequately declared an executive session to do so in executive session. So this is to bypass those those challenges that we experienced a few times last year. But I appreciate the clarification of the language. I think that the the shift to shall might be exactly what we need. And I also appreciate what Gordon is saying, which also is connected to what Judy is saying, which is that we we need to have a plan in place. It's not, it's not exclusively a plan that becomes formulated in that moment. It's a plan that has been designed and agreed upon by the board ahead of time. The one thing I would like to make sure is also that that it's clear that this would be delegated to the vice chair were the chair not to be there, that that needs to be maybe directly stated so that there's no confusion or or moment where it's less effective and efficient as it could possibly be. Judy, I see your hand is still up, but I don't know if that's on purpose or if it's just, we got to get back into Zoom practice, right? Is there anything you want to add to that Superintendent Dy or anybody else have questions?
No, just when it's time, the the board may approve the resolution as written or amend or decline to do so.
Yeah, my question was really on like, I know it says the the board has, will design and approve a plan, but I'm wondering if we have actual timeframes for that, because I do believe that's something that and I don't know if this Maya is the forum to have that conversation on there or that's something that we're going to be having conversation on later. But considering that we are now in the new school year and these are thinking, I mean, it would, I would like to know kind of to a certain extent what timeframes we're looking at in order to have some resolutions on those components of the of the plan.
So Kyrie, my understanding is the executive session we came out of and will go back into is the space where we will work through some of the questions you just raised.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Again, this is, this is a draft and we'll incorporate the word smithing that we just brought forward, but it also is reliant on 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 the plan that has been mentioned and is still in the works.
Thank you.
There's, thank you, Andy. If there's no other questions or comments, then just to just to emphasize, this will be, we will be returning to this at a future meeting to take action. The next item for action at a future meeting is to select a date for our board retreat. So based on a doodle poll of the board's availability, I think we threw out a large handful of dates. It has been made clear that now through middle of October, we have zero full days where everybody is available to attend a meeting, a retreat. So that leaves me thinking we have three options to consider, although I want to open the discussion if anybody else has some creative ideas here. But the three options that I would like us to consider are all much less ideal than finding that perfect date where we can meet in person and all together for a full day of retreating. But the first one would be to hold the retreat on a day when six out of the seven board members are available. There's a couple of those options. Second option, and I should emphasize that that would also include that seventh board member being brought up to speed on that meeting, which would also be available by the recording that will take place because it will be a public meeting. The second option would be to hold the retreat virtually. However, this is dependent on availability. And the third option would be to schedule the retreat in two sessions, so not full days. But that is also dependent on availability. So I I would greatly appreciate, and I know Gordon would as well, folks' input on what would be ideal. To make it clear, the dates that we ask people to look at in the doodle poll are from now through the middle of October. So keeping in mind the timeframe and the and the point at which we are now looking at having a retreat, which has typically been scheduled in August or September. Kyrie and then Michelle?
Um, I know you've been doing a lot of work and Lisa, thank you also on the logistics of getting all this. So I appreciate all of that. I know this is probably the least fun portion of this. But I had a question, like, I mean, haven't, obviously, like, I was just kind of looking at the poll this morning, like, were there days in there that even if they weren't full days, maybe two back-to-back days where even half-days or components of it that we're all in town, that we can maybe meet somewhere, but like in person, but it would be two half-days instead of two full days? I mean, are there any of those clusters on there? I do, I mean, I do think like an in-person one would be, I mean, nobody wants to be nobody, not speaking for the rest of the board, I would personally would like to not have to sit in a day-long Zoom meeting. But if there was any of those kinds of clusters on there, I mean, I think you know, like, maybe we can just pick a couple of spots and meet up, that's.
Okay, so just to, just to make sure I'm understanding, your priority, your or your, your, your first choice would be to go for the half-day, two-session option depending on availability and stick with our plan to meet in person, not via Zoom.
That would be my priority, yes.
Okay, thank you, Kyrie. I appreciate that. And it's hard to know with the with the doodle poll as it stands, but thank goodness Lisa is a whiz at doodle polling. Michelle?
I have the same preference, two half-days would be much better than a virtual retreat.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to add that to my notes. Gordon?
Me too. And I think it'll take a little more planning, but if we, if we plan right about, you know, how we're going to use each of those times, it could even be better than a full day because we'll be, we won't get to a point where we're totally exhausted. But anyway, I'm on the same page as the other people.
Gordon, it looks like we're moving towards consensus.
I would agree. I mean, I was going to say the exact same thing. And in fact, sometimes the two days does bring an opportunity to think about some stuff in between and come back the second day. I would say that my second choice would be virtual rather than to try to schedule without someone. So that would be my clear third choice.
Okay, there, I'm unmuted now. So Judy, just to make sure I get this absolutely clear, you're in alignment with the other folks of two days. But in person, second choice would be online and you want to knock off even the option of the one person being left out of the conversation. Okay, that's very helpful.
The two days don't have to be back-to-back in my mind. It'd be great if they could be, but they don't have to.
That's a great thing to know. I appreciate that detail. Kyrie?
I was just wondering, so like just timing wise, like when you're saying a day, like in the past, like Alicia, Judy, Maya, has it been like, what are there, like, you know, what's a day? Is it like an eight-hour day? Is it a 10-hour day? Is it like, you're holed up in a weekend retreat and you're literally having to like run ropes courses? Like I, you know, like and in considering the notion of a retreat, I think I'm the only one with young kids. Everyone's got dogs. I know I've been screaming in the background or whatever on those. I'm just like, like I would prefer to not be in my house to have an actual retreat. So if it is meeting in person, Judy, I'm with you. If it's like, even if it's not back-to-back, we're fine. But like, again, just, I was just curious on like, what has been historically like time?
I I think historically, it's been like a seven-hour day, which is really
A board meeting, like on a regular just kidding, no, but
Last year, we did two meetings or two years ago, one of the years, we we had the same similar issue and we did two half-days.
Yeah, we did that last year at least, for sure, Judy, it was two four-hour days. And they were, and that was, I think that was helpful. Can I just get head nods that we can knock the virtual option off the table? Okay, I see head nods from everyone. All right, so that number three option is like now void. We are not even considering that.
I would also take off the, make just six of us.
Okay.
Personally, that feels like it's going to cause us more problems than than we need.
Okay, um, do we have head nods on all of that also, everyone? Okay, so then between Gordon, Lisa, myself and Superintendent Dy, we will come up with a new doodle polling plan. They don't necessarily have to be back-to-back, but we will do two days of we'll do two days of four hours. I think that's seven-hour, one day. we'll do two days of four hours. I think that seven-hour one day is probably just to make people feel like they're not there for eight hours. But if we're going to have the transition of coming and going, I think four hour, two four-hour sessions is our best bet. And they will be in person away from our homes, but local and please keep an eye out for that upcoming doodle poll. Unless anybody else has anything to add to that, I feel like we came to a pretty good place of agreement on that. All good? Awesome. Well, then the next thing to note is that our next scheduled meeting is at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, August 17. And the final thing on our agenda is to receive suggestions by the board for consideration of items at a future meeting. I'll give you guys one more second to dig deep and see, but otherwise. Okay. Well, in that case, before I adjourn, I would like us to, we, I want to remind us that we are returning to our executive session. And it's 8:15. Let's do I'd say a five-minute break, but let's do it. Let's do a six-minute break because who knows when that minute's going to flip over. So let's aim for 8:21 back in the using the link that we used originally in our executive sessions. But otherwise, this first meeting of the 2022-2023 school year is adjourned at 8:15 PM. Thank you, everyone.